The bad.
Good evening and welcome to the Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board Number Sixteen Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty five, and it is now seven o'clock P M. Rules of speaking, anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raised hand icon, and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes, and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comments or questions. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Please silence all electronic devices, including myself. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law, Boyer Vice Statute, Chapter ninety-two. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda. Archive materials can be found at our Kalih Valley Google Drive link. Meeting recordings can be found on YouTube in the City and County Neighborhood Commission Office. First on the agenda is City Monthly Reports Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening at Aloha, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And not only Martinez from the Honolulu Fire Department.
Anywhere you want to stand.
This is everybody. Scoop?
Yeah.
So good evening. These are the statistics for December twenty twenty-four. We had two violent brush fires, one activated alarm, fifty-nine medical calls, and one motor vehicle collision. Our price, our safety tips for the month, minimize electrical, electrical fire risk in your home. The D C T tips, electrical work should only be done by a professional, a qualified electrician. Check your electrical cords. If they are cracked or damaged, please replace them. Do not overload your wall outlets or power strips. Use it and only use certified power strips that meet safety standards. Extension cords should not be used long term, only, only temporarily. Follow the manufacturer's instructions for all appliances. And for more information, visit fire dot aloha dot co. That's it. Thank you.
I got, I got a question. You didn't ask. You know anything about the fireworks theft, that one person that died in Kalihi from the fireworks?
We don't know any of that. Then again, there are those questions to Honolulu.
Oh, yeah, I thought that the fire department might respond. All right.
We respond, not with emergencies, but we don't know.
All right, so one did get injured in fireworks in Kalihi. Y'all did respond to that?
Uh, I can follow who did, but we did not.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board, online or in person, or the community, online or in person?
I just want to say that we are saddened by the recent passing of a firefighter.
Thank you very much.
And grateful what you guys do.
And a lot of support from Kalihi Valley.
Okay, and grateful what you do. Brother is a firefighter, and my, my family get that one, so.
We thank you for that.
So we thank you. Be careful out there.
We will.
Guys, you know the danger.
Next on the agenda is Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening. First off, I would like to extend our condolences to the Honolulu Fire Department, who lost one of their own family members in the line of duty during a tragic fire accident this past Monday. So sorry for you guys' loss. Secondly, the Department of Law Enforcement is holding a fireworks amnesty program at the Aloha Stadium for any unused or illegal fireworks this Saturday, uh, January eleventh, Saturday, from nine A M. to three P M. And then without further ado, I'm gonna go over the statistics for the month of December. So for the month of December, we had one aggravated assault with two auto thefts, with zero burglaries, zero robberies, one sex assault, one simple assault, five thefts, zero unauthorized entries into motor vehicles, and we had six hundred and eight calls for service. Um, we touch up on that sex assault case real quick. So it occurred um in the Campford Housing area. A juvenile female went over to her friend's house, and upon entering the friend's house, she was inappropriately touched by one of the friend's uh family members. She later reported it to her uh family members. Police were called, male was located, detained, positively identified, and later placed under arrest. And I'll open it up. I also have Sergeant Martinez from our community policing team also online, and I'll open it up right now to any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, online or in person?
Oh, uh.
Mister Kumala?
Yeah, the week prior to uh the public schools going on vacation, they had a stranger danger alert on Kamamea Fort Road uh in the morning as the students were walking to school. And uh, did you folks uh aware? I, I know they called the police. They apprehended the person in the car that was trying to lure the students. If not, we said, we talked to the school uh administration, and they said it was one girl from Kahevi Elementary and one from Doe Middle School.
Yes, correct. So that's, that's a great question. We actually had a incident with a stranger danger. Uh, some students were walking by the school, observed the male seated in the vehicle, completely naked, and the male asked him to, the student, to grab a cellphone in the, in his trunk. The students were smart enough to leave the area and um reported to the school authorities. I believe maybe Sergeant Martinez might have a little bit more information about it. Sarge, do you have anything on that?
Uh, sorry.
No, wrong.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of it. Um, we also actually contacted some of the schools in the area to, to let them know where it is. Um, we're hoping that that person that was apprehended was the same person that, because there was another one prior to that too that was reported. Um, so we haven't had something since then, so we're hoping that that was the same uh person. But when something like that does happen, uh, we have a lot of school contacts, so we normally contact the schools and let them know about the situation, not just in that area, but all the schools that we know, that we have good relationships with, and um let them know of that. So if something does happen like that, they let us know immediately. And we're also setting up, um, trying to set up some dates with some of the schools so that we can um maybe go in and talk to the kids about it, just to kind of remind them of what happens and what to do in that kind of situation.
Yes, Sergeant Mart- Martinez, uh, that was one of the topics of discussion with the Kahevi administration about uh if you folks had uh personnel that could come to the school in one of their uh assemblies and just give them some tips on how to respond when they encounter that same situation. So you, you folks will be following up with uh Kahevi and Doe.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, we, prior to the uh break, we reached out to them. So we haven't set up a formal time yet, but yeah, we're gonna, that's one of our plans. And normally, like I said, a lot of the schools there in the area know us pretty well, our community policing team. So when something like this comes up or they have other issues, another issue that came up recently was vaping and stuff like that. So normally, they'll, they'll, they'll put an assembly together and we'll come in and talk to the kids. So, yeah, that, we're, we're uh, we, we, we're proactively trying to work with the schools when something like that happens, just to kind of help with um making the situations, you know, so they, they can know what to do.
All right, thank you.
Is there any more questions from the board, online or in person? Are there any questions from the community, um Jackie?
Yes, has a question. Um, so on the third of January.
Yes.
Um, there was a theft happened within our neighborhood, um, in Nubrega. So the police were called. Um, there was um, um, a video. Uh, sorry, I think back. Yeah, there was a video, and um, the first responder came to the, to the property. However, I was wanting to know why um he didn't do a thorough um, um, a thorough job. He left all the evidence, like, the hat and um, and the shirts, and kind of discouraged um citizens to kind of like not file anything and just left the scene. And therefore, um, a second call was me to request for uh the next chain of command, which is um, the sergeant. So was there anything, I mean, were they able to catch or apprehend the um, the person that did the crime?
Okay, so this was on January third, you said? It, it occurred?
Yes.
What was this, a theft, you said?
Yes. It was a, a moped in Nubrega.
On a moped?
It, it, no, what happened was there was two. Right, there's a theft.
It's theft, yeah.
Theft. And what happened was the motor, they came up on a moped, they were on camera, they were video cambered, and the reason that the sergeant was called back out, because they uh, they looked like they was on drugs, but they used a laser to blind the camera so they can steal. And then uh she had on her video the clothing that they wore, their face and everything else. And at scene, uh, they left one, uh suspect left his hat there, and the other one took off his shirt so that he could not be seen. And then when they, they grabbed all the property, they jumped on the moped, and on the video, you could see them driving off with the property. The officer responded to the location. He basically uh took a report but told the resident that it was really not worth him to file charges against the suspect because you weren't gonna catch him and nothing would be done to him. At one point, a supervisor was called, back to the scene, watched the video, saw the evidence and everything else, had the officer retrieve it all, take it, and book it. So her question is, do you know if they have caught up to the suspects yet?
Well, I'm su- I'm sure that it's still assigned to a detective, but anytime you guys feel like services from one of our members of our department is not satisfactory, please do, go ahead and do exactly what you guys did and call a supervisor. Um, do you know exactly what, around what time that incident occurred?
And they have it on video.
I believe it's eight four, eight, eight forty-five was the time.
Was it in the morning or evening, ma'am?
In the morning, and then um, I believe all the evidence was already handed on that, the, the next day, in a U S B format.
Yeah, your, your department came out. They retrieved the video and they retrieved the clothes, and they, the sergeant came out. He had a unit come out to receive the, the, the property, the clothing. Uh, apparently, they had stole something else, but they couldn't carry it on their moped, so they left some stolen stuff, or the clothes and their shirt. But she gave all of that to them. Hopefully, it was booked, and she gave the complete video of them uh doing it. The, the, the M O is, is very uh, uh disturbing because it shows you that they know as they go around Kalih Valley stealing, that they blind cameras with a laser. So that's what's more important, that these two be caught, because they're probably generating a lot of theft reports in Kalih Valley.
Do you have the address? Do you have the address for that theft?
Fifteen seventy.
Fifteen seventy Nubrega Street.
Nubrega, okay, real quick. And you said this was a theft, yeah, that was initiated?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, it is assigned to a detective right now, and it appears that evidence was collected. Yeah, so anytime, anytime you guys are not satisfied with your guys' service, please go ahead and take the next step and call a supervisor, and a supervisor will come out there and make sure that it, the case is properly handled. Um, I'm not, the, that was during the day. I'm not sure which officer went. I'm more on the night watch, but I can't follow up and find out and see why it happened, or I'm sure the sergeant or the lieutenant that was working through the daytime already probably counseled the officer for his actions.
Yeah, he did that at the scene.
Oh, that's, that's perfect.
Making him clean up the stuff.
Perfect.
I, I, I had to help Jackie. Um. So, hi, this is, this is Lynn Robinson from Councilmember Dos Santos, Tampa. I also, I also took a call. Um, I appreciate you encouraging everyone to call their, the supervisors if they are discouraged from their reports. Um, is there a way that you can report either back to the board or back to Jackie personally? I think that everyone would just like status updates because very much like um board member Franklin said, it sure seems like these guys are rampant, like doing this a lot. And, and so, just to put people at ease, if you could, um, if there's any kind of protocol that would allow for updates to the, the board or the, um, the family.
Okay, yes. Um, like I said, the case is assigned to a detective right now, and I think it's pending further any developments. I'm not sure if it's gonna, if it's gonna have any um further developments by the time the next meeting does um come around, but if it does, yeah, I can report it back.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, L T, if I can just.
Go on.
L T, if I can just expound on that. Um, yeah, it might, it might take a little while. So what happens on this video, a lot of times what happens is the detectives will then send out the video to all the officers to see if they can identify the person. So that, that's how they do a lot of that uh identification, who the suspect is. So that might take a little while, because they gotta get the video, they'll still shot it, and they'll send it out not only to Kalih, but they'll send it out uh this uh islandwide. And usually, some of the guys will know who it is, and then that's how the investigation starts. So it does take, it takes a little while, so it might not be something you'll get to the next board meeting, like the lieutenant said.
Thank you. And are there other questions um from the community, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Good evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you. Next up is Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Hi, good, uh, hi, Happy New Year, everyone. Uh, since there wasn't a December meeting, I'll just read the December and January general announcement. So even if it's not the holiday season as much anymore, there's still utility scams that increased during that time of the year. Um, so we want you to be aware that we'll never call demanding bill payment under immediate threat of shutting off your water service. The, the board, we do not accept payment via Bitcoin prepaid cards or third-party payment apps. And then be sure to verify credentials if approached by someone claiming to be from the Board of Water Supply. Be cautious of emails urging you to click embedded links or attachments to pay a bill. And online bill payment is done through B D B S's payment portal, which is at boardofwatersupply.com. So when in doubt, call the Board of Water at eight oh eight, seven four eight, five thousand, five zero zero zero. And you can pick option zero. So that was December's announcement. And for January, we just want to let you know that we want you to perform a home water audit. So we have a water wisdom program that offers tools to help customers conserve water and detect leaks. So through this program, you can learn to perform home water audits to one, ensure your fixtures and appliances meet low-flow standard, and secondly is identify leaks that waste water. So again, go to our boardofwatersupply.com and then slash water wisdom, W A T E R, W I S D O M, water wisdom. And you can watch a short video on conducting your own water audit. And also, don't forget to pick up your free water audit bag at the, our Public Service Building on six thirty South Berry Towne Street. So, um, that's my second announcement. Um, I didn't have any main breaks as in December. And that's all. There's questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community, online or in person? Mister Jameson?
Hi, Iris. Uh, this is Jameson. I have a question. Around the pumping station in Kalih Street, there's about five water breaks going up the valley, five water break, uh, main breaks going down the valley. Is there any plans to repair or replace the water pipe?
Um, do you have the sh- Oh, sorry. Do you have the street name so that I could?
Kalih Street.
Ask about it? Kalih Street itself?
Yes.
And do you have maybe a cross-section that's nearby that I can identify to them?
Well, Kalih Street, not, not uh, not uh. Going to the freeway, uh, Wiki Wiki, not uh.
Ma'ani Eha.
Na'ani Eha, where the pumping station is.
By our pumping station, okay. I'll ask about that. Um, so we do have schedule, we, we do keep track of main breaks, and um, so we do keep that in mind when we try to, um, when we look at projects to do. So I'll see if that is something that's in the works, that's in the planning stages already, or if it needs to be included. Um, so somewhere Kalih Street, on near Nanae Kapono, or near our pumping station.
Yeah.
Freeway, somewhere on there, okay. Kalih Street, okay, I'll go look on the map. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And are there other questions from uh the community, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Me too. See you next month, in person. Thanks, bye.
Person. Um, now, next we have filing of vacancies. There is one at-large vacancy. Are there any nominations to fill the vacancy?
I nominate Jackie. Jack.
Hi.
I nominate Jackie.
Nominate Jackie?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, not one nomination for Jackie. Are there any more nominations? Seeing and hearing none. Um, and if it's just Jackie, um, are we still going to voting? Is that correct? Or do we have forum?
We should have forum.
For, at least for five.
Yep, uh, we have Chris online.
Okay, okay.
Um.
I think.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Oh, yep.
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yeah, hello, sorry. Um, are we able to hear Jackie and just kind of know a little bit about her?
Sure.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
That was good to hear.
Hello, uh, my name is Jackie Yijano, and um, I have been living here since nineteen ninety-three in Kalih Valley. Um, initially at Oahu Street, and um, later we purchased our home in Nubrega, where we settled in with my entire family. So I've been seeing and familiar with all the crimes that has been raised. I mean, that you, uh, that I've been reading. Um, and I just, I, I just at this time, I've had the time to kind of dice, um, take everything in and um wanna um also help and contribute and see where um um, we can I, I guess, help the community better and in hopes that that will be resolution in, in the near future because it is becoming more outrageous. And not just because there's a recent incident that had happened in our property. It, it's, it's, I mean, like Randy said, you know, I agree that not many people getting involved is either because there's not much, I mean, there's much more elderly um in our community, and it's hard for them to, to cannot kind of get out there and, and, and hit their voice out. So in hopes, um, I'll, you know, getting involved with that.
You're already a state, you're already a state employee.
I am a state employee.
She works for the state.
I work for Department of Public Safety, but now is the Department of Correctional. I am the medical records librarian, but in prior to this, I was with the military. Uh, tripled for five years and worked twelve years with the private sector, it, how I specifically tell, other compliance department. So I do, we do security stuff, and I am familiar with the law. I, I know my rights, I, and that's why I, I don't complain just cause I make sure that I am within my jurisdiction and with how I write statute and, and the federal law and everything else, and that's why, yeah, I'm here.
You're gonna bring all that to the board?
Yes, and that's what I, I've done. That's my question, like, I kind of know the, the timeframe, when you didn't make a complaint, you never get an answer. It's the same thing with D C R. When, I mean, we're always in the media, but when will time, I mean, when will we start, you know, giving resolution? There's a lot more out there. I mean, I, I, I didn't come here prepared.
No.
But I, I like to see also resolution. And I've seen a lot from working with the, the state. Yes, yeah.
I nominated her because of her background in, in the state, with the prisons, with the law, with the community. Uh, I know I put her on the spot, but because of her background in all of those agencies, I thought it would be important to bring to the board and give her a perspective. It's hard to get up and speak when you, whether you plan on being nominated. But, but because of her background, uh, and where she's been and, and the agency she's worked for, I think she'll make a good addition to the board.
I was like, I was like the only girl for a while. I didn't realize. That's also what I.
So check out.
Okay. Or she could stay here.
All right.
Spencer, how are we?
Yep, so I'm just gonna verify residence.
Oh, yeah.
Um, if you wanna see if anyone else. Chris, uh, I think.
You can just, anybody else?
Anyone else?
Yeah, anybody can hear me online?
Yes.
Hello?
Hi. I've been listening to this, and um I am also interested in running as well with this vacancy.
Yes, this is Melba.
I act, I'm, I'm sorry, the communication is, um, connection is pretty bad, but um, I actually thought that we were supposed to submit a nomination paper if we're interested in running for the board.
That, that's, I think that's for the election, but I think we're filling a vacancy, but you can, you can come on too. I mean, it's, it's uh, we are here from you, just like anyone else, but I, I think, Spencer can clear that up for us. I think the nom, the paper, the nomination filling, we can do it here, but the
All right.
Election is coming up, we gotta submit our own documents and papers for that. You can clarify that for her?
Yep, yep, um, yep, so the election is, the um, candidates are being accepted for the next election. The election, um, the candidate deadline, sorry, we're gonna announce this uh at the end of the meeting, but um, it's at the end of February, so you have some time here to, to fill for a seat, and that will start in July. Sorry.
This is for the new, uh, just to clarify this, this is for the board, right, for, for this board?
Yep, we have the neighborhood board, so everyone here will have to register, and it'll be a totally, it could be a totally new board um come July. Um, but, yeah, just, right now is the filing um period. So, yeah, this board term ends June thirtieth, so we have about four meetings left for this term.
Okay, so this vacancy that you guys are trying to fill, that's just gonna be for the next four months? Is that, is that what I understand?
Correct.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I was a neighborhood board member way back, maybe in the two thousands. Um, and this is very different. I've been, I haven't joined the neighborhood board and listened to you guys for a while, but um, uh, but yeah, but I'd be interested in, and I, I do, I am interested in filing um my nomination papers for the next board uh members in July, I believe. And I want to make sure that I, I can turn in my papers um before the deadline, which is in February.
Yep, so you could call our office if you'd like to receive a paper copy of that, but it is quite easy and quick to do online. Um, you just write a bio, you put your information in. I have the date. I have the dates now, so, um, the registration opened December twentieth, it'll close on February twenty-first. Um, and voting begins in April, the end of April. April twentieth and it, the voting ends May sixteenth.
All right.
Yep, it's coming up here and, and we are, our office is getting calls and we're just moving along, so,
okay.
If you need any help, just contact our office. Um, our phone number is eight oh eight seven six eight three seven one zero.
All right, will do. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So Melba, if you want, if you're interested in joining now, that's, that's also a possibility to, up to you though.
I'd be very interested, I would be very interested in joining now. I mean, I, I have times in the evenings now, um, and so, yeah, I, I was hoping that I could probably join, be there in person, but, um, I didn't really plan, plan it correctly with, with my, my husband. Um, we do have a car and, and, yeah, so. But yeah, I wish I was present there, um, but no, I mean, if the, if, if the lady before me is interested in, in, in filling up that vacancy, um, you know, I, who am I to question that, right? But, um, but if there's nobody that's interested in it, then, then I'm willing to do it for the next four months and then go in and at the same time turn in my, my nomination papers.
Well, so, um, I did first want to ask if Chris or any of the board members wanted to nominate Melba?
So she has to be nominated by one of them?
Yes, that's why I asked if anyone would like to nominate, um, call my team. Yeah, if anyone would like to nominate.
Yeah. Well, just to clarify, Melba. So if we nominate you now, then it would be like an election.
We're voting for two.
We'd bring us between you two.
Right.
identities.
Okay. All right, well.
Option if you wanted.
Yes.
Yeah, great, yeah, let, let, let's do that then.
Nominate or nominate?
Okay, so Michael Gotti nominate Melba.
Okay.
As well, and would you like to say a few words to introduce?
Yeah, um, I live here, I've, I've been a resident for Inquille Valley for pretty much my whole entire life. I was a previous board member of the Kalih Board, um, way back, maybe in the early two thousand, maybe two thousand and six, seven, or eight, where, um, it was located at the, at the pool where, um, you had the, um, the park. And, um, it was a very, you know, I, that, that's my background. Um, I've facilitated many meetings, um, for my association as well. Um, I was a childcare provider for twenty-two years. I had a business here in Kalih Valley. Um, I also was involved with our church. I was a pastor, council chair for, for a number of years. Um, I'm a, I trained as a paralegal for the prosecutor's office. So I understand, you know, the laws and, and understand how things are done when it comes to police and, and, and crimes here. Um, I am concerned about what's going on in our community. And, um, I had previously ran actually for Congress in our last primary in twenty twenty-four as a Republican. So, um, I believe that, you know, there's a lot of issues here in Kalih Valley. And, um, you know, with my experience, I think I could bring a lot to the neighborhood board. Um, so that's pretty much what I, you know, I, you know, I've got, um, I love, you know, living in Kalih Valley, but we do have issues. And, um, and, and I like to participate again in, in our community.
Um, hey, Melba, I just sent a message. Could you please email me your proof of residency? Um, it could be a state ID, driver's license, or billing statement, uh, just has to have your name and, uh, home address on it. And then-
Right now?
Uh, yep, right now, and then, uh, Chair, if you'd like to, we can move on and then once I verify residency, uh, we can come back to this.
Okay.
So what we'll do is we'll table the voting?
Yep.
So that everyone can marinate and think about, you know, sit on, um, who you'd like to vote for, either Jackie or Melba. And we can move on, so we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is residents and community concerns. So are there any residents and community concerns at this time?
Sorry, Chair, did, um, sorry, Chair, did, did Lynn go already?
Nope.
Lynn go for?
No, no, Lynn is still here.
She's not up yet either, yeah, she's still.
Yeah, Lynn's not up yet, it's so, um,
Okay.
Yeah, Lynn will be in the agenda. No, no worries. Yeah, any residents or community concerns at this time, online or in person?
I just have a comment.
Mr.?
Cause Jackie, uh, brought it up.
Yes.
Um, Kathy, who's online, uh, from, uh, Makato Kim's office. She mentioned that there's a lot of, um, crime happening along the New One corridor and they're going walking up and down the streets. And she, um, mentioned that, so I don't know if it's gonna start happening on our side, in our valley too. Maybe, uh, Kathy could, uh, talk more about it when she comes up, but.
Kathy, me?
From, uh, Makato Kim's office?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
This is Kathy. Uh, it actually was in the Eleven Heights neighborhood. And so, um, that's the update that we brought up the, I believe at the last meeting, that they were having, um, some thefts and burglaries up there, a lot of, um, criminal issues. And I believe, um, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office was also involved. I can believe they were taking the lead on that, but Lynn can correct me if I'm wrong on that one. Yeah, I can give you an update. And it's fine. Thanks, Kenny. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any more residents and community concerns online or in person? And if not, if there are more, no more residents and community concerns at this time, we can move on to city elected officials, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative and Master Clark Bright.
Aloha, everyone. Aloha, Chair, community members. First of all, a very happy new year to you all. It was also great seeing some of you at the Christmas parade. Seems like a while back, but it was so nice to see everybody there. Thank you all very much. Uh, just a couple of quick announcements, uh, the mayor's newsletter, the, uh, it is located in the chat if you wanna take a look at it, it's there. It involves some of the reports about the eddy, the landfill, um, Mayor Blangiardi honoring Calvin Seay, the City Lights, and the city winning a two million dollar grant for affordable housing development in Iberlae. Also, as mentioned earlier, the NCO, the registration for neighborhood board elections is open now. You already heard some of the information from Spencer. Uh, the information also is in the chat, should you desire to do that as well. And then last one, the Ocean Safety Commission is looking for candidates for the twenty twenty-five launch. There is an email to send information if you desire also in the chat. Um, that's all I have for announcements. I had to follow up with a couple of issues. Really just one, it was, there was a question about the Chinatown cameras. Who monitors the CCTV cameras installed in the downtown Chinatown area? There are sixty cameras planned and as of September twenty-four, they've installed thirty. Cameras are currently unmonitored and will not be monitored by DIT. HPD is working on finding volunteers to monitor cameras. The footage is stored for thirty days to assist HPD investigations after an incident occurred. Um, that's all I have, Chair. Open for questions on the board. I, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear anything.
Should be good.
Uh, can you hear us now? Okay, Mr. Franklin had a question.
A question, is the city starting to think about starting a cyber unit? Because we don't have enough, uh, HPD to go around and know, and we're not hiring them. I mean, most cities have a cyber unit, just like anything else, where they could be security guards hired by the city to sit down in a, in a unit to monitor every new camera that we put up. I mean, they're three times cheaper than a police officer. They don't go in the field, they sit in the offices and they just tell the police where to go. I mean, if the city cannot get enough police officers, they might wanna think of another answer to that by simply having a cyber unit of security guards like we do at the airport that can monitor cameras and direct the police to the dangers. I mean, I mean, we're never gonna get enough police officers. They always say they overman. And everyone, including us, are demanding cameras, uh, to make their community safer. I, I mean, I think it'll be a safe bet for the city to just hire security guards instead of police officers. I mean, it's three times cheaper. And the city, if you branch it out to, uh, the international, uh, security company that do the airport, the city don't have to pay the pension, so they don't have to pay their retirement, they don't have to pay their sick or their medical. That's all on the company that's farmed out to. So it's the win-win for the city to protect us by getting security guards to monitor the cameras that we are putting all over the place or that everyone is requesting now. That's my suggestion.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Franklin, uh, and for all. Thank you for that information. We will go ahead and follow up and get back with you on that. But thank you for that information, appreciate it.
Are there any more questions from the board online or in person? Are there any questions from the community online or in person? I have a question. Mr. Som has a question.
Mr. Master Clark, who paid for the, uh, security guard of Fourth Street Mall and Bishop Street? They go around in that, uh, uh, UTV, it's the private, but who paid for it? Is it the city or is it the buildings? But it's up, they go up and down Fourth Street Mall, so.
Oh, I, I presently unaware of who actually pays for that, uh, but we can find out for you. It's, I think it's the private security company, it's one on Fourth Street Mall and Bishop Street.
Yeah, they, they hang out in front, uh, Seven Eleven on Bishop Street. But usually you see them outside of Rossett's on a hotel and, uh, uh, Fourth Street Mall. Uh, they usually sit there, either on, uh, Rossett's side or in front of McDonald's. And then you see them way up and down the, the mall, uh, throughout the day.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll check on that, see who pays for that. Thank you.
Thank you, it's private. Thank you. Are there any questions from the community, online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mahalo, aloha.
Um, up next, we have Councilmember Tyler Dos Santo Tam's office.
Aloha, everyone. Happy New Year. Nice to see everybody in person. I'm glad it worked out this evening. Um, I have a very brief report. Um, in November, um, Councilmember and myself did an additional site visit over at Kalih Valley District Park. So, um, there was a new, you know, parks supervisor, assistant supervisor over there that gave us a little bit more comprehensive tour. Obviously, there's a lot of things that need to be pulled over there to include, you know, the termites and the, on the floorboards and the, um, the ceiling insulation falling all over. Yeah, so some of those are rigor issues that they are addressing, but I think that it's gonna be a budgeting issue and what they would really like to do is to have a whole new roof over there. There's a couple roofs that are like that, that they put that silly sprayed insulation that's now disintegrating. And instead of taking the insulation off, they actually want new roofs. So we have to be patient about that part, but I have good news. In that, um, those of you who were kind enough to go on that initial site visit with me, remember the story that we can't even have geek sports in there because of the, the motors in the, um, motorized basketball that, those mo, that's getting fixed miraculously after asking a lot of questions. Um, yeah, so those motors are going to be, um, repaired or replaced as needed. There was three of them and that is coming. So, um, there is some, and I will keep updating you and we will keep after those improvements, okay? I know that you had had a question, that we also had really specific questions about the swim program over there. And I understand that there was a new pool supervisor. And at that time in November, we were told that they were expanding programs and hours. And I just wanted to ask you as a constituent, that's not been your experience?
Yeah, they've been, um, for this month, they've been canceling the classes.
Okay.
Because not enough lifeguards.
Still, so a big part of my pitch to them was that they need to have after-school programs and we should be recruiting young people for the junior lifeguard program so that we don't have these shortages. So I will follow up on that, okay? And I really appreciate, and I'll make sure you have my card and we'll keep in touch, okay? That's a really good update. I wouldn't know that otherwise and that was something very specific. So that's Kalih Valley District Park. I promised, um, you folks that I would keep you updated about the RPZ, the new, the new area, the new program. And, um, we are not there yet. Um, we thought that maybe that program might have rolled out in January. I actually, we really did have dates that we thought, and I was feeling kind of bad about that because we didn't wanna blindside the community and I didn't have that updated in November. Well, it's looking like it might be more like February and I will keep, I will let you know. But we did meet with DTS and I asked them very, very specific questions. It's really about the rollout and the website, I think is what's going on, okay? So having, uh, a good application process that's user, and it's easy to use on the consumer end, right? And also they're planning on doing some educational, what they're calling pop-ups along the street. I think they'll be reaching out to some community members, like maybe some that are here, and asking if they might be able to put a pop-up in front of their house and then inviting the community to get educated on the program, the application process. If we have, um, people that aren't so, um, savvy with their IT, they can do the process right there. So that's all coming, but it's not coming this month and I will keep you updated, okay?
Is there gonna be a map of what areas are gonna be affected?
Yes, there are, there are maps and it's, I don't have the streets off the top of my head, but yes. And, and so if you go to in that newsletter, um, you, oh, here. Okay, so www.h.com or, yeah, yeah, this link right here takes you to everything you need to know. And I have, um, I just printed a couple, I don't know how many of you are affected, but I printed a couple hard copies of the, of the application, if anyone was interested in what it actually looks like and what would be required in that application process. So feel free to grab one of those for me if you, you or your neighbors would like one.
Lynn, the application, uh, do you have, have the fees scheduled too?
It doesn't have the fee schedule on it, no, it does not, but I can get that to you. Oh, well, it's, it's, no, no, it's on the website yet. But I, I do have it. Um, I have it in a paper copy and a slide that they gave, so, um, I will make a note to myself to make sure that you guys get the fee schedule.
Can we ask some questions now?
Yeah, are there more questions from the board?
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Mr.?
You, you know why, uh, I think that the fee schedule came out initially in the news. And some of the residents was concerned about, uh, well, kind of high fees. Higher than they expected. And, uh, and I think I mentioned that to you and you said there might be some kind of program where it can subsidize. I don't know, I don't like to put any words in anybody's mouth, but I thought that was part of the discussion that somebody said they had some kind of subsidy program for someone, yeah, for like financial aid. No, you're not familiar with that?
I don't know that we just, I know, I remember that that was kind of an initial discussion. I don't know that it was, um, the final discussion.
Officially, yeah, yeah, initial discussion.
But it's still a very good question I can go back with, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so like financial assistance.
But anyway, people were reluctant about the high, uh, so-called high fees. They wanted it, but not paying that high.
Yeah, that was, this is-
But you know why? We're so used to do free. We was free for all these years.
Remember the town halls that we did?
Yeah, yeah.
And they were, yes, 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 we wanted, but oh no, now we gotta pay. And what's fair to pay and we did too, but we did too.
Right, and the director explained, even the fees that we're paying is just a fraction of the cost.
Yes.
So, you know.
And they really tried to make it, um, you know, step down for additional cars and all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Okay.
It was a lot of thought and a lot of input.
Yeah, so those pop-ups that you, you mentioned, I think that would help in the initial, uh,
Sticker shock.
Sticker shock.
Roll, roll out.
On the program, yeah, we would need that, because guaranteed we would get some feedback.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, it happens a lot, you know, we get a lot of calls where people know kind of the concept of RPZ and are asking for RPZs in other areas and then we have to remind them the cost that's involved and really- and are asking for R P Zs in other areas, and then we have to remind them the cost that's involved and really and the buy-in that you need from the entire community, right? So, um, but let me get, let me make sure that in my next report that I do have the fee schedule for you guys and then an answer about whether or not there is any kind of financial assistance, okay?
Yeah.
And then, um, I guess I'll I'll touch on um Aleva Heights, upper Aleva. So, um, there's, it's really been the Liliha neighborhood board that there's been plenty of reports from um community members and and I know that the Chair Fong was involved in um crime that's happening, um thefts that are happening in neighborhoods, there seems to be like repeat offenders. All of them have ring footage and photo evidence and things like that, it's just been ongoing. So they had reached out to our office for assistance. Um, actually, uh, so I just want to preface because I'm afraid I'm gonna, I'm gonna forget to say it. But firstly, I I I am always here to help. Councilmember really, really wants to help with these things, especially when we have these ongoing issues that seem to linger and maybe they they, you know, we can help to facilitate take conversations. But if anyone, like with Jackie, has any theft, anything that's a threat to you to uh that's gonna be a problem in your communities with any sort of, um, you know, threat to public safety, call nine-one-one. And most of the time, someone will appropriately, because they are appropriately trained and ready to do their job, will help you and get you the assistance that you need. And you, um, sometimes you will file a report over the phone and that's okay, sometimes, right? But if you really, really feel like you need an officer at at the scene, then you use that language and say, I need an officer at the scene. That most times when the officer comes onto the scene, they're gonna be very receptive. They're gonna ask the right questions. They're gonna thank you for reporting and you'll have an excellent experience. But sometimes, in different parts of our district with people who would never know each other, I hear a similar story. And we discussed this in the meeting today, that sometimes either at the dispatch level or sometimes the the officer that comes to the scene is not encouraging or yeah, of being a good listener, following through the report. In that instance, just like was said tonight, always ask for a supervisor. And um I was told today by um the lieutenant, uh, that there are some issues sometimes with that and that they appreciate, number one, that you call, that you're willing to do give a report and also that you're able, that you're willing to ask for a supervisor because they don't know what they don't know. And then they're they're really committed to um to more um training and and actually punishment if that's necessary, but um, don't let it ever be a deterrent. Your first, when you're, when there's a threat, you call nine-one-one, okay? Now, if you call nine-one-one a million times and you feel like, or any department and you ever feel like you're not getting um the kind of response that you should be getting and you feel like you're spinning your wheels, or maybe not being respected or fully heard, or maybe there's a language barrier, whatever it is, if it, if there's a roadblock there, please reach out to me. Please, please, don't hesitate. And so I'll move, so with the Level Heights, we got, we finally, because the people are busy people, got many of the stakeholders to include the homeowners, to include Lieutenant Smith and to include um the lead community advisor. Um, unfortunately, um Chair Fong couldn't be there, but it was intended for him to be there as well. And did a meeting today where everyone was able to, number one, talk about their experiences. They gave some suggestions about surrounding properties that might have encampments that we need to reach out to some private, uh, some private bigger stakeholders, um landowners. And and we got great advice from the, from H P D, which was exactly what I just told you. Report, if you need to get a get a supervisor, but report, report, report. And then think and gather all of the evidence that you can, but only safely, okay? So moving forward, we'll be, um, I followed up with our community policing team. Well, I had extensive conversation with them, that Sergeant Alato, I'm sure many of you are familiar with. He, you know, there tomorrow, they will be out there, kind of, they looked at the, at the T M K map. They're gonna see who's responsible for what parks. There's a hiking trail up there. We have some concerns that the encampment, you know, is contributing. Um, they're gonna work with the private landowners and we'll we'll move forward. Um, and hopefully, just try to get to the core of where these guys are coming from who want to steal everybody's blue bins and other things out of there. Yeah, so I'm sorry that was kind of long, but just, um, I feel like it's helpful then. Because what was happening up there was that they, the homeowners just got in the habit because they were having a repeat incident, or they, they saw the guy that was on their ring camera that they knew had stolen property and they made that report, walking by again, rather than nine-one-one-ing again, they're reaching out to kind of their neighbor. And then they're just emailing us and and it gets frustrating for them because we're saying, touch me, nine-one-one. Nine-one-one is your first line of defense always, and they are there for you. They they really want to help, so, yeah.
Well, I have a question. You know, at the police, uh, community police, uh, group came out, did they suggest like neighborhood security watch program?
So.
Are we thinking about doing that, you know, in our area of Kalii?
I'm gonna absolutely say, please do that and let's do that together. I will make sure that I get you guys in touch with exactly and get your proper training and get you, and get your volunteers together.
No, I mean, for Level Height.
So Level Heights, they're not as receptive to something like that. Well, they, well, only because they're saying, we might be able to, it's, I might be able to get there with them. Right now, they kind of have, I think that they um feel like the obligation to be walking and policing is not really what they want to be doing. They're asking for added enforcement up there. But they say that they're getting a little older and that maybe they, yeah, that's not really what, yeah, how it might be best, their time might be best utilized or what they feel comfortable with. So, so, but I, um, it's the first thing that I want to say to folks. Because any, it's not only so the, um, it's it's more positive activity, right? It's not, it's it's just more positive activity everywhere. You guys end up in the parks and the street, and everybody knows auntie and uncle, and then that is just a deterrent in itself, right? And it does kind of give everyone an excuse to get up and out. And um it's 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 unknown, the data shows that just the presence is as a deterrent. So um I'll follow up with you guys, so we.
I got a quick question, really quick question for you. When the police department talk to you about when they also come out and violate their policy procedures, what type of discipline do they say they give them, besides just saying, hey, don't do it anymore? I mean, if talking to the councilman office, because violating a policy, if you don't take a report, you almost used to be suspended for days. And if you talk people out of not taking a report or saying that that you should be suspended for days. Where I come from, you get fired if you leave evidence behind, you are terminated immediately. So I understand that, you know, we pray that we get a good policeman that'll show up, that ain't lazy and that'll work and do his job. But if they talking to the council office, then what are the punishment they're saying? I mean, did they give them a comment card? Did they put something in their record to keep them from promoting? Or did they just say, hey, just be nice next time you come out? Did they tell you what type of discipline they give the officers who violate policy and procedure?
No, and we didn't, but we didn't ask that question, but we did hear tonight that that sergeant said, if need be, there will be a re- reprimand.
Yeah, but he did.
So ours was, ours was not such a, it wasn't a direct incident.
Yeah.
Okay, that we were asking specifically about. It was kind of a broad term of, because this had already happened in the past and it wasn't a specific report. So I was just asking for him to give, you know, let everybody know that they should call nine-one-one and if they don't get a good response, then he should call, uh, ask for a supervisor. So, um, I don't know what kind of answer we would get if we asked really specific questions about what the procedures are or what the levels of reprimand are.
Because those are big-time violations.
Yeah, I I think that we would need to have a very specific incident.
Well, we did, we did tonight, yeah, should have.
Well, we, we had tons of, I mean, for, for, for three years.
But the, the, the sergeant tonight said, if need be, there'll be a reprimand, he needs to go.
But that sounds like.
Yeah, but for three years, we've been hearing that. Everyone knows in Kalii that police don't take reports. They spend more trying time to talk you out of report than taking reports. And that needs to stop. But the the question is, what's the reprimand for it? If you find out that he violated policy and procedure, then it should be, I don't say suspend him and take money, but there should be a written reprimand in his package. And if he.
I wish we would have thought to ask that.
Yeah, and if he has two or three of them, then he should, we should look to terminate him.
And next time, Randy, you should ask that, especially as a former police officer.
Yeah, that, that, but they know, I, I said, they said, I was there when that incident occurred. I'm the one called the police back out and talked to them, because they're my next door neighbors, so. But that's the, that's the, you know, I know what police problem we have, but it's not gonna get better until we figure out what reprimand you get when you turn down a report. And if you get caught, most time you won't get caught, but if you get caught dirty, then there should be some written reprimand going in their package.
It sounds like there is, but we didn't ask for the specifics.
Well, if it is, then they should, I mean, at my department, if we found out something like that, we went to do a reprimand, but we will also send out something to the complainant, saying that, we're sorry that it happened to you. There also has been a written reprimand has been put into his package. Or it's so severe that we are now disciplining him, he will, he is going up for suspension for two to five or termination. But this police department, you know, I understand everybody, you know.
When the supervisor that was called back to the scene at Jackie's house, did, were they apologetic and said, I'm sorry that the first person, and then, yeah, probably articulated that there would be reprimand there? Yeah, we just don't know exactly what.
Did they say reprimanded that time?
Oh, yeah, we can tell.
And I do see online Chris Dolemola has his hand up. Is the rest of someone?
Mr. Se.
Okay, um, Chris has his hand up if he'd like to unmute, and then I also saw, uh, Melman too, okay. Uh, Chris, are you online? Okay.
Yeah, hi, hi Lynn, thank you for coming tonight. Um, I just wanted to ask or to get an update of the painted lines that we spoke about last year. Getting any update with that, and I do have a comment after your response.
Okay, so I appreciate the update that the lines have not been painted. Remind me of the streets.
The street is basically from Ono Shop all the way to the Pink Store, all those inside streets, the the main street of Kalii Valley.
Okay.
Kalii Streets, yes.
You and I have an email chain about this. This is an interesting thing.
Yes.
Not making excuses, because you know that I put the request in.
Yes.
Chris now, in the city, for them to circle back with us and tell us that the, that the work that we requested is complete. So when the Department of Facility Maintenance says to us, yes, absolutely, we've started a work order, here's your work order number, there, and there's no process for them to say, you would think that they would love to get back with us and say, we did it. But there is nothing right now, and I I talk about it to whoever will listen. So the way that we know when things get done is that either we would, I, we put in over a thousand requests, these risers last year, so it's very difficult for us to keep up with every single one. But we either have to go back and get into the field and find ourselves or we get great feedback from the community that says, thanks for the street line, street lines being repainted or the, or the sign being replaced. So I need to hear from you that it's not done yet and then I can follow up on that work order specifically and find them how long it's been.
That would be really appreciated because uh in November, uh, while I in St. Louis, uh, they they stopped coming through the roads so they could repaint some of their roads. Uh, in, uh, I think September, uh, Cohio Avenue in Waikiki, um, from the east side going westbound on Cohio Avenue, all new lines there, painted all new lines. So I'm not too sure why these communities um are able to get their ticket punch as far as repainting their lines and beautifying their communities, and we're on, and we're on back order. So I don't know who else we need to talk to, to get this happen, because this is from last year that we're trying to, you know, keep our streets safe here in Kalii Valley.
Yeah, very fair. Um, the lines at Punch Bowl right now are all being redone and, you know, I, and that's been um a year and a half since those were, um, since those were requested. So, um, in my perfect world, we would know how long these li- the lines last before they're faded and then we would just have a known work schedule, be like, well, it's been six years, we gotta get back to Punch Bowl, right? And we don't have to wait, right, for potential accidents and faded crosswalks and all of that. So believe me, um, it bothers me a lot and I appreciate your feedback and I'll, I will absolutely follow up and just let them know, kind of long and kind of dangerous, and um we'll see what we can do, okay?
Thank you, Lynn.
Thanks.
Thank you. And are there any more questions from the board online or in person?
I think, um, Melba.
Did you have a Mr. Kula?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Kula.
Wait, what else?
Uh, we have Melba, but.
Chris is done?
Chris is done, um, uh, Melba is.
Oh, just.
Not that word, maybe it's okay.
Okay, one more. Well, uh, regards to the rec center parking lot, I mean, it's an ongoing situation where parking is very scarce. Yeah, I mean, we've discussed this all the time, anyway, uh, and uh constituents and stakeholders of the that use the rec center continue to uh talk about it. And and what is discussed is that although the police get assigned stalls for their blue and whites, they park the civilian car in the s- in the parking lot and take the blue and whites out. So they don't only get their assigned stall, they're using the school staff parks during the school time. They get the city county vans parking and they don't just take a car stall, they take one wider stall with an access stall, and those drivers park their cars, you know, in parking stall while the storage stalls are empty during the day, you know, condominiums, so you can't park. I see, uh, I assume they staff where they get scrubs on. You park in a rec center, cross the road and walk to that car home across the street. And and so my point is, there's a whole lot of people parking there, they're not using the rec center. You know, they, police station, school, storing, city county vans, and people outside of the rec center property. So when the people that come to use uh programs, they hardly are parking.
So I brought it up when we were there, because part of the reason I made told that some of the resources, especially for the pool, aren't coming is because the pool is just underutilized, it's just underutilized. So they don't believe like, it's a beautiful facility, right? And and it, they don't believe like build it and they don't come. Build the programs, they don't come. Why can't, you know, why can't Farrington have a world-class swim team, right? That facility's there. So part of it is because nobody can park, part of it is because of parking. So I haven't really gotten an answer back, but that's, that's kind of added information that you know that the civilian cop vehicles are there and that we know that school staff is. To me, now, just top of mind, I don't know how you guys feel about, because you're, you know better than me, um, does it make sense to make a request for, um, you know, parking for par- uh park users only signage over there, to have something that looks like that?
There is.
But you're like, hey, is that good? Because if I just say, well, what are we gonna do, parking is bad, like, we could be, they could tell us no, but we should probably be a little bit more specific in our ask. So does that make sense to to say parking, well, just like, I don't think it makes.
You have a van and your personal vehicles there, right? They, they're, they're gonna, right, right? So why, why is this thing?
Well, then it would be enforceable though. I mean, in in theory, it would be enforceable, the cops cannot like, nah.
Who would enforce the rule, what, the police officers?
Yeah.
The other guy is parking.
I mean, that, but it would be, we would.
Yeah. Well, it is a issue that is being uh discussed by the parking users. So that, I think we can come up with a plan, and we'll come back in, uh.
You know what?
I mean, I don't know what else we can do.
Lynn, Lynn, a question I have, I have a really good question. Because the police have parking in the back of the police station. So the question is, if there adequate parking for the police in their own parking lot, which is behind the station, or they're just too lazy and they park in the front because it's closer for them. So the question is, do they have adequate space in their parking lot? Because they gotta go through a gate versus just take a parking spot from the park. So, because I looked before and it looked like they had adequate space for every single watch to park in their designated parking area behind the, the lot. And therefore, only the police cars would be in front, not the police cars in the officers who just wanna park up front because it's easier for them.
I can ask that question.
Okay, that's, that's the person to ask. But we need to sign up, and then-
Fire station over there, too.
But you wouldn't? But if you put the sign up, and then we let the lieutenant know, right? You could let the, the officer know, I'm gonna park it up. You know?
For sure.
So, that's a good start. And then we-
Yeah, I can't imagine another deterrent unless we just wanna like, give them a call and say, please, I mean, please have your officers not parking in the park. That's a thing I could absolutely do.
But why is this, those city county vans even parked there? That's another thing.
Storage.
Because, because they were getting stolen at the town.
Yeah, so, don't, don't they, don't they have their own facilities instead of using?
No.
You know?
I heard the rationale was because they were getting the tenant converted stolen from where they used to be parked. They thought they come Kalii Valley, the substation is right there, it's the last step. So that's why the rationale is, yeah.
I love that Kalii, he's the same place to park.
Yeah.
There's no certification.
You know, when pickleball became so popular?
Yeah.
When pickleball teams became so popular, they decided to make the time of the pickleball the same time as the water exercise. So now we're competing with pickleball.
I remember that.
Remember?
I remember when I first started coming to the reward, and that's what I was hearing about them. And people parking all the way down the street and all of that.
Who made that decision?
Who made the decision?
The people?
Park, uh-
Park director. Park directors, yeah. So, anyway. Sorry, I'm sorry.
And Melba, online, she had her hand up. If you have, uh, a question over Tyler Dos Santos. There we go.
Hi, yes, this, this question is for, um, for Representative Tam's office. I, I believe it's Lynn?
Yes, hi.
Is that correct? Yes, my question is, um, are there in Kalii Valley, are short-term rentals allowed in Kalii Valley?
No.
Right?
No.
Well, is there any rules regarding?
Is there any updated rules regarding short-term rentals? I do know that there was a hold last year because of a court order. But I do know that, you know, my question is, because it's, it's a bit confusing. Um, there is a map. Kalii Valley is outside of the hotel area Waikiki. And yet, there's a short-term rental occurring at a street that I'm familiar with. And, you know, I, this is a personal email that I had sent to Representative Tam's office. And it was on a personal note. But I'm gonna make this official because I'm sure that a lot of residents here in, in Kalii Valley would be concerned about, you know, we, we've got crime going on. We've got people spraying cameras, you know, and, and things like that. Um, you know, short-term rentals could also be an ongoing problem here as well. You know, people come and go. But the, the confusion that I'm getting is that, you know, exactly what is the definition? What is the definition of short-term rental? Is it constantly changing? Because is it min, is it minimum twenty-nine days? What is it?
Yeah, less than thirty days.
Yeah, what is less than thirty days?
There's a permitting process.
Yeah, firstly, there should not be a short-term rental in your neighborhood. And so that is absolutely something that I can help you with, and that should be reported. And you can be, just so you know, any of these things that you, that, sensitive or not, that come to our office, the way that I handle these is that they come from our office. And internally, so that I can report back to the constituent, we have your contact information. But anything you ever ask for that is like anonymous as far as you're concerned, you are constituent. Like, like, um, you know, John or Jane Doe, just. So if you're comfortable, Melba, you can absolutely, I know that you said it was just on a personal note, but I'm here to help you. We work very closely with DPP here, are trying very hard to crack down on these short-term rentals. I would be happy to, um, report it.
Well, absolutely, because I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna hold you guys accountable because you've got the mayor, you've got also Councilman Tam saying, on civil beat, saying that they're gonna go after these big guys, you know, these big whips coming from the mainland, you know, charging them ten thousand, because that's what they want, right? But yet, the confusion is, 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 it's quite confusing when they say short-term rentals are not allowed in Kalii Valley. And I think a lot of residents or constituents should be concerned, okay? Because there, it is occurring, but the definition changes based on that less than thirty days rule. It's either a short-term rental or it's not. If it's a bed and breakfast, I don't know what it is. But it's constantly changing and it's frustrating. But because I'm speaking on, you know, on a, as a constituent now, I don't think that I'm the only individual resident in Kalii Valley and also constituent of Tam's and politicians here that it should be made public now. My question is, is there short-term rental allowed in Kalii Valley? And if it is, then I would like to know exactly what law is it that, 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 that's, you know, that, that they're finding a way around it? Because it's quite confusing. Because I certainly would like to do a short-term rental, I was allowed to do it.
It's not confusing, they're not allowed in residential areas.
Yeah, just not allowed.
But thirty days, and there you are.
Whatever the law changes, it doesn't, it's not allowed in residential areas.
At least thirty days is allowed. It's less than thirty days is not allowed.
At least thirty days, or, or, or?
So that's why it's short-term, less than thirty days is considered short-term. So if you've got someone coming to stay at your, in your place, that you're not there for three weeks, and we can prove it, you're gonna get, you know, cited. And you eventually get shut down. And we are actively, and we are actively coming after these people and there, there's, it's been, you know, can be quite effective. The process is that there's an investigator and they come out. And they, that, they will absolutely, you know, see what the kind of traffic is at the property. We've been very successful in the last couple of weeks with a couple of them because the people who stayed there were more than happy to talk to the inspector. And they knew that they were only staying there for a short time. So thank you Senator Mercado Kim, you know, for any clarification. It is not supposed to be in the residential area, it should not be in your community in Kalii, Kalii Valley. And if you'd like some help with reporting, I would absolutely be more than willing to help you with that.
But you will potentially see thirty-day rentals, which is a thing, right? I mean, especially with digital nomads and stuff, we do get people still using Airbnb for thirty-day rentals, right? You see, I know people who run thirty-day rentals or Airbnb.
Are you saying like, that's a little bit of a loophole where you're, okay, well-
There's actually a market for the meaning of thirty days because of remote work and things like this nowadays where
Well, I think that needs to be made very clear because it's very misleading.
I'm not sure where you're getting misleading information, but I'd be happy to give you accurate information.
We can put it on our board agenda next, next month, and we can go in detail. We'll put it on our board agenda for next month, and then I'll research it too, and we'll go into it.
I mean, you, you want someone from DPP to come talk to you folks about it? Do you, or do you just need me to send you a little email about the parameters?
I think we need something in black and white to read because it's confusing for some, for people who don't really understand, you know, because automatically when they say short-term rental, it's short-term rental. It's either legal here in Kalii Valley or it's not. You know, um, for some people, they don't quite understand. I mean, I thought I understood what short-term rental is, but obviously, you know, I don't, because it's still occurring.
Well, because, as long as it's thirty days.
I can fully understand it, but someone is breaking the law.
We can put on a-
Yeah.
But if it is just thirty, I mean, if it's thirty days, then it still wouldn't be considered short-term. That's right, it's outside of the definition.
Right. So.
So you will get that type of rental legally, but if it's less than that.
It's still on our agenda for next, next month.
That would be great.
Okay.
Well, then you should get some, I mean, who would you like to speak to it? Do you guys wanna invite DPP here?
Yes.
To give you, yeah, that's what I would recommend.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the community online or in person?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, Mr. Sun?
Do we have a Brady list?
A what?
The Brady list, and do we have access to it?
Brady?
Yes.
Is that about?
It's about bad cops. Or people, uh, whenever a cop, uh, does something bad, there is a national agency called the Brady List that, uh, police, uh, are putting on. And from my understanding, for us to move that one, too. But it, this was a Supreme Court case, Brady versus, I forget what state. Um, but yeah, uh.
What came up, I, I am not familiar, so I can't give you an answer tonight. Do you know who runs, is it a federal or a state program?
The city and the state should be putting their officers on this list wherever they have the brackets. I don't, I don't know who runs it, I don't know anything about it. I know it, it's something that all states should have and all police departments should be participating in. Um, I was just seeing one, uh, news report about one police chief had her Brady violation removed. Uh, she petitioned and she had success, went removed. Or, um, lying about attending and training what she didn't, wasn't there. So, um, she ended up with a, wasn't just a slap on the wrist, it was a slap on the wrist and put in your, your folder, like, uh,
Mm-hmm.
Frankly, it was something about-
Was on the record?
So, that was the record, the Brady list violations, that's the record.
I'm, I'm seeing something online that, I'm seeing something online.
We do have a Brady list. Representative Noflott, really? What are the criteria to get on the list?
I don't know.
All right, well, the answer is yes, we do. Do you have any directions to the website?
Do you know about this, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, no, no. It's nothing.
Yeah.
Is it a legitimate list?
It's a legitimate list, but most people don't because everyone wants to move their bad apples. And a lot of people don't put them on them, they just want the, the bad apples to resign or go away. And you usually find out about the Brady List coppers once they kill somebody in another state or something went wrong. And then the agency that hired them will go back to the other agency and say, why didn't you tell us about this? And they'll say, well, we went through court and, and, and we didn't wanna be sued and stuff like that. So it's really tough to get them on the Brady List, and people keep moving. We call them gypsy cops because you can't stay in one place and you just go. Every time somebody terminates you, you go somewhere else, and people end up with bad apples all the time.
Or they quit before the end of the, uh, investigation.
Yeah.
And they go someplace else, so they never end up on the-
That's why we call them gypsy cops. You, it's, it's tough to get them on the Brady List because most municipalities don't wanna be sued by the cop that's on the Brady List. So bad apples get to wander all over the place. All right.
Well, now we know, and we have one.
So there's only twelve people on the list, I just saw.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I got educated, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone.
Supreme Court case.
Okay. Are there any more questions from the community online or in person? I'll double check online. Seeing, um, and hearing none, so I do wanna thank you, Lynn Robinson, for answering all your questions. So, yeah.
Thank you for all the questions.
Yeah.
Thank you for all the stuff.
Next on the agenda is state-elected officials. Governor Josh Green's representative, Deputy Director Kristen Sakamoto. I believe I got an email today stating that, uh, they will not be attending this evening. But they were planning to report on the following. Um, the governor's newsletter may be viewed on governor.havai.gov/newsletter. Follow-up from previous meeting with resp, oh, with respect to questions regarding outreach programs at Camp Four Housing, please email benjamin.h.park@havai.gov and H P H A at havai.gov. With respect to the question regarding the funding goal for the captive insurance program and property insurance program, funding discussions are preliminary at this time. The condo and property insurance task force previously discussed and considered a loan of thirty million dollars each to the Havaii Hurricane Relief Fund, H R F, and the Havaii Property Insurance Association, H P I A. A O A O master policies are beginning to lower and stabilize. While hopefully that cost continues trends downwards, the task force, H R F F and H P I A remain steadfast is continuing their efforts to find solutions to further stable, stabilize the insurance market in Havaii. And that's the report from Kristen Sakamoto. If you guys do have any questions, like, we can email you.
Email them if we can have the guy for Camp Four come to the next meeting.
Okay.
Don't even tell us all the wonderful programs he have in Camp Four. Which is zero.
H P H A to come to our next meeting. One. About H programs. Okay? Thank you. And then you can also email me, or if you'd like to email them directly, you can. Um, and up next is Senator Donna Mercado Kim Zambis.
Hello, everyone, and Happy New Year. Uh, thank my staff, Kathy Lee, who's been on the, on the meeting call while I was at another community association meeting. Uh, our report has been sent in digitally to the chair and to you members, uh, and community members who have signed up with my office. Uh, if you would like to be added on and you're not already getting our report, please send us your email and we will be sure to get that to you before every meeting. Uh, just to update the community, Kamaua Schools, Kapahalama, and this is on my report, is starting a construction project to improve the existing campus facilities. And there's gonna be related traffic in the area of the Makua, Makua County Street and Makua County Place. And so to minimize the impact to neighbors, the following measures will be in place. Uh, project work is scheduled to take place Mondays through Fridays from eight AM to six PM. And on Saturdays from nine to four AM, uh, nine AM to four PM, sorry. The periodic delivery of large, slow-moving construction vehicles will be limited to nine AM to three PM in order to prevent travel during the busy traffic hours. On-street parking should not be impacted and dust is not anticipated, but measures to mitigate the dust will be employed if necessary. You have any constructions, um, in, any concerns, you can contact Brian Shibata um, at the Construction Project Manager at eight oh eight eight five three six three two four. Uh, let's see, uh, if you have e-waste and you wanna recycle, I know that's always hard to get rid of some of your computers and so forth. Battery build is holding an e-waste recycling event at Leo Mono Elementary School on Saturday, January eighteenth, from eight to noon. And they will accept your TVs, your laptops, computers, cell phones and printers. Uh, they won't take lithium, lithium batteries, however, or hazardous materials. And any proceeds used will be, uh, raised will be by Leo Mono Elementary School. Uh, also, back to school, Farrington High School is hosting a back-to-school event on January twenty-fourth at two thirty PM to six PM. Uh, it's the front lawn by the auditorium. And, um, they're going to have events that includes local food vendors, games, photo booths and more. They wanna start off the New Year celebrating education and learning, and they invite the community to join them on that. And finally, um, on behalf of myself as well as Representative Hasi, uh, the legislature is having its opening day on Wednesday. It's Wednesday, um, the Senate will be gathering in at ten AM. If any of you would like to attend the ceremonies, do have some tickets available for the Senate Gallery. Um, it is first come, first served, however, if you have a ticket, you're likely to get a seat. I invite all of you after the ceremony, if you wanna stop by and visit my office, we will have some light refreshments for you. Um, in light of all of this, the session's starting. We have been in budget briefings, uh, we- Uh, we started on Monday, we go from early, the morning, uh, to late in the afternoons. Uh, we've been, uh, meeting with each of the departments and agencies, going over their budget requests. And of course, holding them accountable for spending your tax dollars, making sure that there are waste, there's a lot of waste going on. Uh, one of the areas I don't know that you're aware of is overpayments. What happens is when, uh, employees use up their sick leave and use up their vacation time. Uh, they get paid automatically, the payroll system is automatic, so they assume you have vacation, and so they pay you. Turns out you don't, uh, you know, you have, um, unions like the teachers who get all their vacation upfront and all of their sick leave upfront. So they use up all their vacation time, they get a check with the full amount, and they ran out of vacation, so now they owe the state the money. We have, believe it or not, over a million dollars in overpayments. And it's not just this year, I've been after them for the last twenty years. And corrections have high overpayments, DOE has high overpayments, University of Hawaii has high overpayments, Department of Health have high overpayments, and they all add up. And if somebody quits, or somebody retires, they have a hard time collecting the money. And so AG write it off, so you have all this tax dollars that's been overpaid to employees. Uh, and, um, there's laws that says they have to pay it back. And, you know, they're supposed to pay at least a hundred dollars, but the administration collection have not held into that. So I am introducing a bill again, uh, to make sure that we can collect these funds, but it is a big problem that's going on. I also just wanna say that during the legislative period, if the board can put the legislators, uh, upfront, because we have long days and into the evenings and early mornings and even staff, and so that would be really helpful for us 'cause I know a lot of the issues that come up is city and county. And so, um, yeah, if you folks can accommodate us, I think that would be appreciated. I am open to, uh, any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Franklin has a question.
My first question is to thank everyone in the legislature who helped get rid of the Windfall Act. Uh, they just signed that in, so thank you all for, uh, doing that, that I appreciate. And, and I wasn't gonna ask another question, but is it overpayment, uh, a theft? And isn't that a crime that should be referred to the district attorney?
Well, it's not considered a crime because the mistake, they say the mistake is on government's part for not having a system in there to catch it. However, what happens is when you run out of your vacation time or sick leave time, the department is supposed to then, um, put in your payroll by hand, you know, manually, and not override the system. But they claim, you know, that they can't keep track of all of this, and so they blame the computer system. And our computer system is very old, um, and historic, um, you know. So they're trying to, we've been for over a decade trying to put in a new system. Uh, but technically, they're supposed to pay it back, and the law says that we can collect, you know, after.
That's what I.
So, they're not, they're not diligent about collecting.
Uh, so that's over like twenty million dollars over twenty years that the, that the state just gave away without collecting the debt, 'cause if we're paying them a pension, then we can go after their pension or their social security. I'm surprised they haven't filed a, uh, uh, some court action to go after their pensions or go after their, uh, their social security to recover that debt.
Well, what happens is the AG gets it and they go to collections, and then they can't collect, so they write it off. Some of it is not because they retired, a lot of them, they quit. You know, they quit working, you can't find them, you go through the mainland, whatever, and they just can't get the money back. It's like the University of Hawaii, if you don't pay your tuition, they have a hard time collecting. And so they can only wait, if you then, um, enroll, re-enroll the university, then they catch you. But other than that, if you don't pay your tuition and you leave the state, uh, they don't have ways to collect the money. And there's a lot of that going on in addition to what we're talking about. What we found out today, which is even more troubling, is that one of the departments, the new Department of Law Enforcement, found that there were, they have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, they just, they just came into being this past year of overpayments, and they inherited, and they found it through an audit, and this is from people that came from corrections that wasn't, wasn't found out, that they had overpayments. So if they didn't audit, so that's another hundred thirty-five, I don't know how many other employees we didn't find because the departments didn't do a good overview. It's terrible, I, I agree.
That's over how much time? Is that, you're talking about one year, or is it?
Oh, no, there's been going on for twenty years, for twenty years, I've been.
No, no, but the hundred thirty thousand is overpayment through.
No, it's not necessarily, it's a carryover balance, but you don't know how much was written off.
Okay.
It wasn't, wasn't.
We don't know how long that was, that the hundred thirty years.
Yeah, it's been for, for a long time. Every year I go over, or every year I, I go after them about these overpayments, and it gets pushed away.
Is the legislation going to legislators, going to try to, uh, close this loophole and, and stop this?
Yeah, I, I amended the law, in the past, they were only collecting twenty-five dollars a paycheck. So can you imagine if you were overpaid a thousand dollars, and some of them have paid, been overpaid more than that? That twenty-five dollars a month, you know, twenty-five dollars, and by the time you, you're gone, you, you left the state. Um, so that's really bad. So we changed it to a hundred dollars, and today we just had this argument in the interpretation of a hundred dollars 'cause it says that the employee has to agree, and I do not, do not agree with them in the interpretation of the law. And so therein lies the issue, so we're gonna re-look at the law again and make it even clearer that it can be.
Sorry, isn't there, isn't there a way to just prevent the problem from happening? Like, I don't feel like a lot of employers are overpaying their workers by this way.
No. Actually, they, uh, they, I, I mean corrections, right, at Halawa, and we, it's actually new the system HIP and it still hasn't been fixed.
What's, what is that system?
It's called HIP, H I P. So we just actually went into that system during the COVID, we're using D five five, the long paper at first, so we had to use policy to put everything in, but we can't even trust our own pay stuff with our sick leave and our vacation. So we, we gotta manually keep up with our own. So they say don't trust HIP, why? Why use a system? And it's totally been new, so it hasn't been long, it's only been three years.
Well, the, the, the entire system is actually working.
It is working.
Yes.
And, and Dags, Dags is the one that pays the, pays the paychecks. And so unless the supervisor goes in and do it manually, which they don't, and keep track of it. Um, and you know, the school says, oh, our schools are so large, but you know what? Each school are responsible for their own payroll. So each school, I mean, there's not that many teachers, students, students in each school to keep track of you. You know, you know who runs, kinda runs out of, out of, um, vacation and so forth. Uh, but they don't do it manually, and so the computer just assumes that they worked the full forty hours and that if they went on vacation or sick leave, that they have it in their, you know, in their accounts. And that's what happens, and then they, the system don't catch them till several months of overpayments, and then it gets.
If the computerized system makes that many mistakes, are they saving any money with the computerized system?
They're not, but I mean, they're, they're bigger cities like LA and places that have the, I mean, their stuff is ran perfectly. Anyone trying to get like the system that the big cities are using, 'cause they run their payroll and, and, and they will suspend and fire and terminate us if we took overpay like that, you'll be terminated. Because they consider.
We have been, we have been working for over a decade in trying to get a new system, and just this, again, just yesterday, Dags came before us and they said, oh yeah, we hope to get a system running in four years. I said, excuse me if I don't believe you, because you guys have been telling me this for ten years. We're gonna get the system, we're gonna get this new payroll system, and we haven't yet, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Alright.
Sorry.
Thank, thank you for answering my question.
I get passionate about these things, you know, it's our tax dollars.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the board online or in person? And if not, are there questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much, and have a good evening.
We'll keep you, we'll keep you informed about the bill, and you maybe you can send in testimony and support.
Thank you.
I do, I do have a question.
Oh, oh, sorry, Mr. Sung has a question.
How do we get tickets?
Oh, just call my office, we'll get you, uh, two tickets, like I said, I have, they get a lot as ten, and I think I have like six left, so, um.
Yes, ma'am. Can you reserve one for me?
I'm sorry?
Can you reserve a ticket for me?
Yeah, sure, we'll reserve one for you, call my office, and then we'll, we'll send it out to you.
I still gotta call?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, yeah, you gotta give your information and everything, 'cause, um, I might forget, I got so much on my mind. Um, yeah, I might forget, so call my office and we'll get it to you. And Kathy's on the line, so Kathy, if you can make a note of that?
Yes, I will, Senator.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Are there anyone?
If you need anyone to, uh, do a petition to help get that, uh, pay system up, I'll be on board for it, ma'am.
Okay, uh, we'll call you for other things too.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Franklin's made six resolutions so far, I mean, uh, well, we're doing three now, and then.
I have twelve.
Twelve, yes, that's right.
That's a good time.
We'll do, we'll do four and. But again, thank you, Donna Mercado Kim, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Senator.
Uh, thanks.
Good night.
Next up is Representative Ikaika Hasi.
Yeah.
Who is next?
It's good to hear, buddy. Um, let's see, I don't have much to report, as, as Senator mentioned, the legislature convenes starting next week. And, um, so, you know, there's just, right, right now, there's a lot of, um, kind of, they're not quite here, it's their briefings. Uh, 'cause I'm on the finance committee, there's a lot of just, uh, deep dives into what the various departments are doing, what their funding priorities are. Um, so most of my time, frankly, is being spent in, in those conversations. Um, and then, of course, you know, issuing, not, not issuing, but drafting legislation that will be introduced next week or in the next couple weeks. So that's one question that I had is if there's any particular, um, you know, priorities that the neighborhood board would like, would like me to introduce, I have a couple of slots available. Um, each legislator on, on the House side is allowed to introduce up to twenty bills. And so I think I might have two or three slots available, if there's any priorities that arise to the top of your, uh, board list, so let me know. So, but beyond that, just please come to opening day.
It's Wednesday, right?
It's Wednesday.
Yes, at fifteen. And, uh, we'll have lots of food, I'm sure the Senator is gonna have a lot of flug food too. And, 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 you know, spend the day with us, hang out, get us a nice business.
Representative, I, I can give you a couple of, um, companion House bills, to the Senate bills, like, like the overpayments.
Hey, let me know, happy to do that.
I have a question.
Oh, miss, well, well, should we start with the board and see? Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Hasi? Oh, Mr. Sung, has questions?
I'm glad you're still here, uh, Senator. Um, and even for, uh, uh, county member.
Representative.
Your, your homework is TIF, T I F.
Yes, yes, I would love, love a TIF.
Tough, TIF, uh, uh, bonds, have you heard of that, TIF bonds?
Um, thank.
You find it.
Yeah, so, um, it's a way for us to revitalize the community, uh, get all this, uh, um, uh, condos that are outdated, re, uh, um, redone. Also be able to get the road improvements, uh, implemented, you know, every, basically, the state and city counties wish list to be done, but we're using property taxes by doing it. But we have to improve the property itself. Um, I tried to talk it over with Senator Jared. Yeah, yeah, and he, he wanted to do TIF zones, but I'm suggesting we do TIF projects. So we, we find, uh, something that needs to be worked on, figure out what the current property tax is. We work on the project and then see what the future, uh, uh, property tax is gonna be. And that property tax is gonna fund the bond, the municipal bond, for other projects around the area. Um, so that way we have, we're utilizing money we don't have, basically, we're creating money out of thin air.
That's a city issue, that's a city council issue.
So, so there, there is currently a TIF statute on the books that the state, the state of Hawaii has a, has a TIF statute in H R S. It authorizes the city of the, you know, author a city, kind of, or little in all the other counties, to do TIF projects. Um, I, I believe that the whole up right now is the, there is a standing opinion from the Attorney General that TIF is not constitutional, in spite of the fact that it's, it's on the books, it's on the books. And so my, my sense is that, um, there is a reluctance by a lot of the decision-makers to actually move forward with TIF projects, um, because of the, of, of that AG opinion.
Hmm, so, but it's the state constitution that you're talking about, not the US Constitution?
That's right, you're talking about the constitutionality of, you know, within the context of the state constitution.
Okay.
And that's because the state constitution has all, has all this other tax-related language, right? It's actually very verbose and specific about taxation, which I think is a problem. I would actually prefer the, for the state constitution to be much broader about constitutional, uh, about taxing power so that the state and the county could have more freedom to, to do things, like right now.
But there's a thing.
Yeah.
There, there is a thing where you cannot bind future legislators, you cannot bind the future taxpayers on, on certain things. So, um, you know, so you have to pass it within those times, and then you cannot count on the future because you may not have it, and you're binding the, the legislators at the time now into the future, and they may not be there. So there's that whole issue, it's, it's very, yeah, complicated on, when it comes to taxes, who you can tax.
That's right, but I agree with you Jay, I, I love TIF finance.
Well, I mean, we could do that, it would solve, enjoy your problems. It will also fix our condo insurance problem, right? It would fix a lot of the stuff that we're currently sit, situating, you know, stagnant problems that we're having. Um, using future property taxes, only people that's gonna suffer on it would be the people collecting the property tax, right? 'Cause you're, you're paying, using that property tax income to pay for the bond, but once the bond is paid off, now the city and county has all this money coming in, so it's stagnant here, and as soon as the bond is paid off, boom, all this money comes in, but then you have staggered out, you have more and more projects coming rolling around. So how do we, especially on the rail, how do we move all that infrastructure along the rail with, with, uh, you know? Yeah, we have condos, but the streets and the, the water and electrical, everything else needs to be fixed. So how do we fix that? How do we, well, where does the money come from? 'Cause it doesn't.
But when you use, when you use future, um, property taxes for current projects, when there's new projects come along the line, then you have no funds for that, because you've already committed the future funds. And so, you know, if you have an emergency or you have any kind of disaster requires taxes, and then the property owners will then be assessed, uh, additionally, and that's not going to sit well with the property owners 'cause their taxes are already high.
We, we do, right.
Those are one of the other issues that come up.
Oh, yeah, but the way it's been, Carmel, Indiana has done this, and they've done it pretty successfully on the way they've done it, and Carmel, Indiana is where the Indiana, uh, Daytona, uh, uh, five hundred is in. And it's a very Republican state, and they implement.
Yeah, and some of those communities are, have, are very rich, and they have a lot of.
Yeah, so, but they were able to increase the infrastructure by using TIF funding. And it's just the way we organize it and the way we, we do it.
Can we put this on our next agenda?
Yeah, with, uh, with help.
We can move on.
We can also do email too.
It's a good suggestion, it looks like you're already able to speak to legislators about it, right?
Right, we can move on.
Yeah.
Kinda.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again, and, um, next on the agenda is board business. I was wondering if Melva, I tried to message you, um, were you able to email, uh, uh, your ID to Spencer?
I've just responded to you. I've sent it three times, for some reason, on my end, it's not going through, it's being queued.
Uh, we can wait to, however long you want, you didn't postpone it to a certain time, so you can keep waiting.
Yeah. Because I'm.
We don't have a Mr. Rojas, we don't have.
We need the board member, we gotta vote on, on board issues. We need to vote.
I think.
Oh, we need to vote, just.
We need to vote.
We need the vote, but I don't think even if we get a new member, we don't have quorum.
We should have quorum, we got Chris, we got Quorum.
Do we have Quorum?
Yeah, cause Chris is on mine.
But um.
Now, you are gonna run for election, this, you are coming on the board, trying to run for election next, in the next two months, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, she's up for vote, right?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we see if, if her email comes through, um.
But we got a lot of resolutions.
Yeah, we can, we can hold off, we can, we can hold off on the vacancy until after, at the end of board business.
Okay. Okay.
Why don't we make it the.
We still vote with five, right?
Right.
Yep, yep, we can vote with five, yep.
I think, wonder if she's using Google Chrome or something, but go ahead.
Okay, so first on the board business with adopting resolution urging legislator to adopt good government reforms.
Yeah, I can, I can adopt it.
Um, yeah, if you guys are interested in this resolution, can I get a motion?
One quick moment.
Okay.
Melba, wanna take, you, um, Spencer said you could take a photo of it and just text it to him, if that's easier.
On text?
Oh yeah, what, um, can I get his number then?
Yep, I'll send it in chat.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for this. So, oh, so can I get a motion?
I motion to uh, approve the urging legislation to adopt good government reform.
Okay, so it has been moved by Mister Franklin, any second?
I read the last one.
A second.
Second, okay, seconded by Mister Lule Maga, are there any discussions? Okay, so if there is no discussion, then we can now vote to adopt the resolution. Um, this will do, all those in favor say aye. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor. Aye, okay, thank you, all those opposed, say nay, and all those abstain? Okay, looks like the motion um, has been approved, thank you. And now next we'll want to resolution to restrict park in, oh, I think I typed that wrong.
Restrict parking during school hours for the improved traffic flow and street maintenance.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
Yes, on the break up.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, anybody who want to, everybody, everybody understand this, what's going on in these, or you need to discuss these really quickly, or everybody knows what's going on. Okay, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, so Mister Franklin, um, has been moved by Mister Franklin, are there any second? Mister Gotti, um, seconded by Mister.
I second.
Oh, and Chris is on, are there um, any discussions? But are there any other discussions in Indiana? If, if there is no discussion, then we can now vote to adopt the resolution. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, all those opposing nay? All those abstain? The motion has been passed. Thank you, and the next resolution is resolution requesting the allocation of funds to complete repairs to the Kalahi Valley District Park. Can I get a motion?
I motion, no problem.
It has been moved by Mister Franklin, any second?
Second.
Chris can second this.
It has been uh, seconded by Mister Lule Maga, um, are there any discussions? Okay, if there are no discussions, then we can now vote to adopt the resolution. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposing nay? All those abstain? The resolution has been adopted, thank you. And I believe this is the last resolution. So, resolution to request the repair of crosswalks and school street signs for the safety of children walking to school, can I get a motion?
I motion, not me.
Mister Franklin, it has been moved by Mister Franklin, any second? Miss, uh, seconded by Mister Gotti, are there any discussions? Okay, if there is no discussion, then we can now vote to adopt this resolution. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? All those abstain? The resolution has been adopted, thank you everyone. And now we will be con, doing the consideration and establishment of a resolution committee and its members, can I get a motion?
I motion that we establish a resolution committee.
It has been moved by Mister Franklin, any second?
Second.
It has been seconded by Mister Kumalai, are there any discussions? From, I can just state from my understanding, this resolution committee is to follow up on the resolutions that we just approved.
To write, follow up and to distribute them to where they need to go.
I believe uh, NCO does the distribution, but I'm assuming we're just making sure it's.
No, we, we can distribute too, we may have to make sure the NCO gets a copy of all the resolutions, but we also can distribute. Already called NCO and talked to them, already talked to Oint them already. So we also, then what they would do is they will put it on our website and distribute, but we also can distribute to make sure it, it, it gets where it needs to go. Therefore, the committee, the resolution committee, when you ask the committee what they're doing or what went out, we can have proof that it all went where it's supposed to go.
Are there any more further discussion? And if there's no discussion, then we can now vote to adopt, oh, I have, adopt the resolution, but to um, establish a resolution committee. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say nay? All those abstain? Okay, now we have established a resolution committee, I did wanna ask if anyone would like to be the chair of the resolution committee?
I'll be the chair, already wrote twelve on it.
Thank you, Mister Franklin. Thank you for also writing all these resolutions.
Yeah, yeah, somebody else need to cajon up, yeah, who else wanna jump on?
Oh, Mister Gotti, all, all chairs all, all automatically.
Okay. Right, absolutely.
Also a member, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, and now we will start approving our regular meeting minutes, we'll start with October ninth since we did an a quorum last meeting. So can I get a motion for the approval of Wednesday, October ninth meeting?
Awesome, move.
Thank you, so it's been moved by Mister Kumalai, any second?
Second.
Has been seconded by Mister Franklin, are there any discussions or corrections for October nine, twenty twenty four meeting? Okay, if there is no further discussion, then we can now vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, all those opposed, say nay? All those abstain? The motion has been carried, thank you everyone. And now it's the approval of regular meeting minutes for Wednesday, November thirteen, twenty twenty four, can I get a motion?
Motion, no proof.
It has been moved by Mister Franklin, any second?
Second.
Seconded by Mister Kumalai, are there any discussions or corrections? I actually have one amendment, I read the community concerns, there's a summary that was actually from October's meeting or Travis, um, Travis's, um, what is it called? It's the hunters, the, the dog hunters summary, so I believe there wasn't any concerns from the last um, November committee, um, from the community, so. I'm just noting that amendment to, of course, that's still a community concern, I do wanna follow up to the line about that too. But just wanna make that amendment that, that was back in October, not November. Okay. If there is no further discussion, then we can now vote. Um, we're going to be voting on approval of regular meeting minutes with the amendment that I um, mentioned. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you, all those in opposed, say nay? All those abstain? The motion has been carried. Thank you so much, everyone, uh, thank you so much to the board. And next on the agenda is the beautification committee that we just had before.
Chair, we could uh, do the filling of vacancy.
Oh my god, okay, sorry, we're gonna go back, back, and we're gonna go back to the feeling of vacancy, did you get the?
Yep, yep, so I received um, I received both addresses and both are in uh, sixteen, Kalahi Valley. Um, so just to recap, um, Randy Franklin nominated Jackie Ujano, is that correct? How I say your last name? And then uh, Michael Gotti nominated Melba, um, Amorong, if that's correct? Um, and I could do the vote if you'd like, cause we did the introductions already, if you guys, are you guys ready to vote? Um, so being that we only have five members tonight, uh, we would need all five to vote unanimously for one um, one individual. And we will do, we can do as many votes um, as it's productive. Um, so we can start with uh, first vote, um, so you can either say Jackie or Melba. Um, when I get to your name, uh, first up, Chris Lule Maga.
Jackie.
Randy Franklin.
And Jackie.
Alan Kumalai.
Uh, Jackie.
Uh, Chester Koga is not present, Simeon Rojas is not present, Fernando Tan not present, Michael Gotti.
What happens if we don't vote?
So it, so, so yeah, so it, so if, if we don't, if we don't approve a vote or on this round, then we can take a revote. If the votes remain the same from the second and the first, then we'll, we'll just move on.
Well, you revote today.
Yeah, 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 we'll just keep going and if it keeps changing, if people keep changing their mind, we'll, we'll revote until the votes stay the same and we don't get anywhere, then.
And then we just move on to next, next uh, we're just pass it over. We can just do one vote and then pass it over, and it's just keep going round and round.
I mean.
Speak your mind.
It, it's tough, we'd like, love to have both of you on, on the board.
Yes.
Believe that.
I guess Melba and.
Melba.
And Chair Lealoja?
Melba.
Melba, okay, so we have three votes for Jackie and two votes for Melba. Um, we can go ahead and do another vote and see how that, uh, how that one goes. Chris Lule Maga?
Jackie.
Okay, we have Jackie, Randy Franklin?
Randy Franklin.
Mister Franklin?
Mister Franklin.
Melba. Change, Melba.
Uh, Alan Kumalai?
Uh, Melba.
Okay, Chester Koga not here, Simeon Ross, Fernando Tan, uh, Michael Gotti.
Melba?
Melba. Lealoja Tumbaga.
Melba.
Okay, so, so now we have four and one, uh, we can take another, another vote.
One more vote.
Can I go first?
Uh, yeah, yeah, you can go first.
I go Melba.
Melba. Uh, okay, sorry, Chris Lule Maga.
Chris's.
Jackie.
Uh, Alan Kumalai?
Go Melba.
Uh, Michael Gotti?
Melba.
We pass it over to next, next.
Uh, Chair Lealo Tumbaga?
Melba.
Okay, so we have uh, four votes for Melba and one vote for uh, Jackie. Um, how would you like, would you like to take another one, should we?
We can, we can put up to the next meeting, um.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, um, look, yeah, put it to the next meeting, that's okay.
Okay.
Um, is, should I get their email address so that we?
Um, sure, sure, yep.
Okay, but, but, oh. I'll, I'll get talk to you after the meeting, but we'll put out to the next, of the next agenda. But while we're going back to committee reports and assignments for beautification committee.
I mean, it was, uh, I had a meeting today on the beautification committee and we talked about the resolutions. We talked about uh, re- recruiting, uh, people from camp floor were supposed to be here, they were supposed to be, they was organizing at least ten. I failed through because uh, the person in charge, Rapati, his father died and I guess it, it will be passed on until the next meeting. Uh, that's into my recruitment thing, we talked about the resolutions that we just passed and uh, and uh, and, and uh, how are we supposed to recruit and how uh, things are happening in the community, far as to make this board more popular, to get our names out there and what we supposed to do. And uh, that's basically what we did on our board, uh, because the rest of it will be in the next segment that we're finna go to. So that is what happened in the beautification committee.
Thank you. And afterwards now is the chair's report, so first I want to say Happy New Years, everyone, it's twenty twenty five. And thank you everyone for attending our meetings. I would like to remind the board members that as a board member, you are allowed to miss two meetings. And I understand that we have our own lives and things happen and this um, is also voluntary, but I encourage everyone to finish the term strong, we only have four more meetings left after this one. So please to call, uh, please come to all four, and if you have any questions or concerns, please contact me individually or Spencer, um, but anything. Uh, yes, please come to all next four meetings, May is a, um, what is it called?
Recession.
Recession, so we're not meeting in May, but every other month until June. Uh, our, the day, our, the month we will be meeting on the second Wednesday at seven P M. Okay, and final item on the agenda, oh, final on the agenda are announcements, so. I did want to actually note, the candidate registration is now open, we, this is the third time announcing it, so. Again, deadline is Friday, Friday, February twenty first, twenty twenty five, for the candidate filing and voter registration. And voting will be then done on April twenty fifth to May sixteen. Okay, and the next meeting will be Wed- Wednesday, February twelve, twenty twenty five at seven P M at Kapal Mahale, room two two seven. Broadcast meetings, neighborhood board meetings are aired on Ololo, channel forty nine on the fourth Saturday of the month and six, at six P M and the first and third Sunday of the month at nine A M. Are there any more announcements? Okay, and if there are no more announcements, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.